Good evening, welcome to the Board of Selectmen's meeting. It is Monday, July 13th, and it is 6:30 PM. Would you please stand and join me with the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Mr. Clerk, would you take us through the agenda, please?
Yes, not a lot on the agenda this evening. 6:35 PM, contract signing with the DPW Teamsters Local 653, and six action items.
Great, thank you. Open forum. Mrs. Gilpatrick, I believe you are here for open forum.
Yeah, I just want to speak a little bit about the town census as opposed to the federal census. And we have the street listing books.
Thank you.
Copy for you.
Thank you.
Product of the President.
Nice, like the red.
Yeah, I just wanted to explain the process of the town census versus the federal census, because a lot of the people, generally what we do by the first of the year, we mail out our census, which is called the annual street listing. When we don't get a response to that, we send out a second mailing. We sent, we generally have about between 6,000 to 8,000 households, and a second mailing was over 2,000 households that we sent out. And we still have little under 500 households that haven't responded. So we've taken to calling the households for ones that we have phone numbers for, and we've gotten some people, "Oh, I did it online this year." And it's like, that was the federal census. This is the town census, this is different. So then they've given us the information, and we can update them. As of last week, our population was up to 13,862, and that does include 844 people who we consider inactive. So once we don't get the second reply back, we inactivate person, which, it doesn't take them off the voting list, but it just puts them as inactive, so that if they do come to vote, they'd have to prove to us that they're still a registered voter and a resident of East Bridgewater, and then we reactivate them. They're allowed to vote. The only time that if they send us back a confirmation that they've moved out of town, then we would take them off the voting list, and then they can't vote in East Bridgewater anymore. But we've been trying to make the calls. Finally, we just went with the figures we had at the moment to get the street listing books out, because we usually have them out April, and here it is, July. People have been calling and asking for them, and so we just went with what we had. So it's, number's probably a little low for what we actually have, and hopefully we can update that as people reply. And it is also very important to reply to the federal census, too, because the census figures have a lot to do with the funding that comes to the town, federal and state.
Right.
And that's about all I had to say.
Okay.
Noble, could you add to that?
It's very important for the town to get the correct census number, because there's dividing lines between population that determine the formula for state aid, particularly the local unrestricted aid. And we're just under 14,000, and 14,000 is one of the dividing lines. So the federal census says we have more than 14,000 people, but we're not accounting for them, or we're, we can't find them. So we need some help in getting those people to understand that this affects directly funding of local government when they don't respond to the census. It's not that we're being nosey, it means that we get count, you know, they count, we get, we get funding. And it's very important, and that, especially where we're so close to the 14,000 mock, please, if, you know, if you're, if you're not counted, this hurts.
Right, right, and even I know-
We have to cut the town clerk's salary.
Like Council on Aging, the money that the Council on Aging receives from the state is directly based on the number of seniors that we have in town, and that's, you know, a per head, you know.
I must say, the seniors are usually the best responders.
That's great.
Thank you very much.
Yeah. And I was going to ask if, I don't think he was just-
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't think David meant, "Thank you, go." I just, did you guys have any questions? I don't think that's what you meant. But thank you for coming, yeah, you were running. Thank you, and yeah, please fill out the local and federal census.
What's our final figure that you have?
Well, there is, the figure on the front of the book, right as of last week, it was 13,862, which I think is four less than on the app.
So we'll write at that 14,000 mark.
Yeah, it's so close.
Okay. Fill out those census forms, people.
We have 500,000 that haven't responded?
467.
But I think if each of the selectmen take 50,000-
But he's going to answer the door, we're in a pandemic. We can yell from the sidewalk, social distancing.
In uniform.
Thank you, David, yeah, we'll-
Take it under advisement.
Yeah, thank you.
Discussion next week.
All right, well, it is 6:36, so we'll move to our appointment for the contract signing with the DPW Teamsters Local 653.
Selectman, this is Mr. William Trask, who represents President of the Local 653 Teamsters Union, who represents the DPW. We have gotten to know each other pretty well, because we've been working this one out for a long time. And I want to thank him for an excellent representation of his union members, and he's a hard bargainer.
Great, thank you, thanks for coming in.
Thank you, Chairwoman Julius, rest of the board, thank you very much for having me here. It pleases me to be here and have a completed agreement with the DPW in East Bridgewater. I believe this is our third agreement around, since we've been representing, the local has been representing East Bridgewater DPW. Again, it was a pleasure to work with the new town administrator, Mr. Noble. Had a few speed bumps, but we got over it, and we're here now, and I appreciate it, so thank you very much.
Thank you, thanks for the work that everybody did to get us to the table and ready to go ahead and sign. We need a motion.
Yep, I'll make a motion to accept the signing contract with the DPW Teamsters Local 653.
Second.
Any discussion?
No, have Bill sign, and then we pass it around.
All in favor, please say aye. Aye. Great.
Always a pleasure, Mr. Trask.
Thank you. We've got to start me like we do, Mr. Sheedy, though. Thank you.
So there's three copies, so we'll have them executed tonight, and then we'll wait for the union representative, the members' union representation to sign it. We'll send you over a copy.
Very good, thank you.
Yeah, those go to John.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening, everybody.
Thank you, we would do a virtual handshake, as-
All right, Noble.
Thank you.
Thank you, have a good night.
All right.
Let's have you guys sign at the end.
Yep, that's great. Right, move to action items, then.
Approve minutes of the June 15, 2020, 6:30 PM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Approve but not release the minutes of the June 15, 2020, 7:10 PM, Board of Selectmen's executive session meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Approve minutes of the June 29, 2020, 6:30 PM, Board of Selectmen's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Approve the minutes of the June 22, 2020, 6:30 PM, Board of Water Commission's meeting.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye. Approve Amy Baxton, Friends of East Bridgewater Trails, to use Satcham Rock Farm Sunday, 10/18/2020, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM. Raining date will be Sunday, 10/25/2020, 1:00 PM to 4:00 PM for their annual grape pumpkin walk.
Second.
Any discussion? Is all good with social distancing and all of it? Because it's outside?
They are allowed.
Right, they can have up to 100 people?
Up to 100.
Okay.
Be up to them to do that.
We can put in the letter like we do every letter, you know, about the social distancing and government's orders, and, yeah, guidance and things like that.
It'll be different by then, too.
Exactly, yeah.
And the other thing we want to put in there, just to keep in mind that the senior community center will not be open at that time, so-
I don't think they ever use the inside of the building.
Sometimes, actually, we've had open houses the same time they've done this before, so they may anticipate something.
So I'll just put not the inside.
That won't be it.
Okay.
No access to the facilities. All right, any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Approve the following Board Committee members' reappointments. Sean Riley to the Historical Commission, effective July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2023. You go through all of them? Madeline Uzo to the East Bridgewater Arts Council, effective July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2023, and Paul Cornell to the Patriotic Activities Committee, effective June, July 1, 2020, through June 30, 2023.
Second.
Any discussion? Thanks to everybody for stepping up and volunteering. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you. Mr. Noble, we have a town administrator report for us.
Yes, I have only a few things for you this evening. I want to report to the board that we received two grants last week, one for human resources policy review, one for financial forecasting. Both, excuse me, both grants were put out for a bid to fulfill. The Collins Center responded to both favorably. So we've start, we'll start the HR policies review this Thursday at 11 o'clock, and the financial forecasting, I haven't heard back from them, but I'm assuming that we'll turn that on soon, sooner than later. So these are two grants I've been standing in line for, for a little while, and I'm pleased, one was for 12,000, one's for 20, so-
Those are great projects to get going on.
These are desperately needed, and particularly at the financial forecasting and the software, which is basically an Excel spreadsheet that create for us based upon our unique financial issues. So I'm pleased to actually get these, it's been great. And it's the fastest turnaround I've ever had. I put them in on a Monday, I had an answer on Wednesday. So, very pleased. I'd also like to introduce you to our intern. This is Andrew Buckwinkler, who is working on his degree for public policy. He is currently working on our capital inventory, and doing a good job so far, and updating our Gatsby compliance for the reporting of assets, which we're three years behind on, so we're going to try to finish that up this summer, and complete it, get that behind us. And then that will work well for the capital replacement plan, so when the Capitol Committee meets again, we will actually have accurate data. So, thank you.
Maybe he can do enough that you won't have to commit on Saturdays in the summer.
Yeah, probably not.
We have to get them all, do we have any classes on organization? Obviously, we're having a problem.
Maybe we can write a grant for that from the Collins Center, too.
I think I've organized, I've organized to do it on Saturday morning.
Anything else?
No, that's all I have for you.
All right, thank you very much. Rebecca, announcements?
I received an email from Viking sports parents regarding the Viking sport road race. Unfortunately, they did have to postpone the road race this year. They had hoped to reschedule in August, but unfortunately, they weren't able to. They hope to hold it next April. They are having a virtual road race. That's it for that. Other than that, the next Selectmen's meeting is Monday, August 10.
How does a virtual road race work? Do you like run with a camera? I'm guessing you know about this, because I sure don't.
Do they have a website or a Facebook page?
Yeah, you just put in your information.
Yeah, you put your information in, so I think you just do it as a family or individual, and, yeah.
I think you should run with a camera.
I do.
Yeah, you could do that, I guess.
Just track your-
I don't think it's all about the same kind of, just whatever you're doing.
Track your mileage and things like that.
Thurston's are doing the same thing, the Thurston's family is doing one in September, I believe, the same idea, instead of having their run.
All kinds of records are broken when they do it.
I bet, yeah. I can imagine. Okay, anything else? No, all right. We have some board discussions, rentals at the community center. Brian, do you want to provide background on this? Or David, do you want to talk about it?
Actually, I prefer to, I would defer to Mr. Sheedy.
That's fine, you're the liaison there, so-
Based on what we're hearing from the governor, as far as when he may start authorizing more than 25 people indoors, we don't have, one, we're not set up for this yet. We don't have sanitizer machines available. We won't have them available until, at the earliest, probably November, December type deal. For 25 people, right now, it's just not worth us renting it out. We still have to find someone to set up and break down. We still have to get instructions on how we sterilize before and after, and during the course of events, restrooms have to be sterilized. So what we're doing right now, and again, with the agreement of the board, is we're putting this off until the governor comes through and tells us that Phase 4 is ready to start, whatever that may be. If he's, the governor stays by what he said originally, that would mean when we have a vaccine. So based on that, we don't see any rentals being authorized down at the Senior Community Center until, maybe not this year. And we're being realistic and honest, and that's the best we can do.
Okay. I mean, I think it makes sense, unfortunately, Peter, do you have-
No, I've spoken about it with our group, and with Brian, and with David. I agree, I mean, I think Nancy's pretty much on page with David as far as the reopening. They're looking to do some things outside, though, David.
The Council on Aging is trying to do a couple of things outside. One might be cheer yoga, something like that. They're talking about with the Care Act, that we may be able to build a watchy court down there, cornhole setup down there. She may, again, be able, if we can get some shaded area, bring in some kind of entertainment. But again, that will be indoors, and it really has nothing to do with the function hall. Because, again, we're trying to piggyback when the Council on Aging is going to open, and we may not see that this year neither.
Right, I agree.
As much as they may put pressure on you people, but, you know, again, a lot of the seniors are calling in, but not too ma- but I think that most of them are calling in just to have someone to talk to. I don't know even when they set up for cheer yoga or entertainment, how many people are willing, at this point yet, to leave their house and mix with other people.
Right.
Even with social distancing and the fact.
Right, and everything that's outside right now, it's so warm. This is not good, good weather for seniors, or anybody to be outside, but particularly for seniors, so, okay.
We've looked on putting some awnings up over the deck at the senior center, and some umbrellas, and-
That'd be nice.
So those are-
Good addition to that.
We have the umbrellas now, but they're talking awning both in the front deck and the back deck, enough to cover about three quarters of the deck, and if more space is needed, they can set up some more tables with umbrellas there to do the backend of it. But, again, something to look forward to, but right now, everyone's hands are tied for safety reasons, and they should be.
Do you need us to take a formal vote on this? Or is this just for discussion, so that the public knows?
Yes, I think, yeah, because we've actually started to prep the refunds for those people who put deposits down, because I think the sooner that we let them know-
Can make other arrangements.
I think Diane Walco-Kennedy has been in touch with everyone that had set up, surrendered, and just told them it's not going to happen to Phase 4, and we have no idea if that will be this year or whenever.
Okay. All right, I will take a motion, then, please.
I'll make a motion that we put into play at this time that we will not authorize any rentals of the Senior Community Center function hall until such time as we get information from the governor that Phase 4 is going to be implemented.
I'll second.
Right, any further discussion? All right, none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Vacant property, 131 Hubbard Road. Patrick Franny, a building inspector, is here. Would you like to give us an update on this, please?
Good evening.
Thanks for coming in.
Did you get, I think I had some pictures along with that, too. So you saw the, you know the property we're talking about.
The pictures don't do a chance to-
And the bottom line is, we can't find an owner because we think, you know, the owner passed away, the person they left the dude passed away, and all the family has. So it's left in tax title, I guess.
Well, it is and it isn't, it's in tax, it's in Land Court. Land Court has rebuffed our statement that the missing wife of 40 years ago can't be found, and they're, and they've sent it back for more work to track a relative. Excuse me, if I'm not mistaken, I'm going to call on Melissa, who actually had the conversation, so she can, because I'll tell you truthfully, you can't make this up. Melissa?
Well, Land Court itself has two lawyers that work for them, and they happen to be a married couple, and unfortunately, the wife passed away recently of cancer, so the husband is on bereavement. Everything has been held up in Land Court to begin with. Land Court's not considered to be essential. So they're at home, they can't take files, they're not allowed to take them from Land Court, so they can't work on any of our cases. And every time they give us a project to look at, to do, to find, and prove that this person is not, we can't find this person, then we deliver it back to them, well, our tax title attorney delivers it back to them, they review it, then we wait for them to let us know what they think, yes, no. Unfortunately, they're not sure if the gentleman's even going to come back to work, he may retire, because he's of retirement age, and they haven't done any training of staff to take their spots. So basically, we're held up here in that, in Land Court, pretty much for everything right now.
Okay.
Because they're the, just the couple. So, you know, they've been working on this for years, and every time we bring something, they say, "Okay, but..." And it's because his wife left him in the 40s, or what have you, and there's no proof that she's-
Dead.
Dead.
Okay.
So we have to make sure there are no heirs, and they have to make a family tree, and it's just a crazy long process, and this is the longest. So-
So it comes down to the bottom.
It's not that we're not trying to, not to, you know, foreclose and make that property available, but it's just not working yet.
Okay.
So-
So Patrick, you were recommending that we take it down.
So, right, so for that process, we have to notify the owner, or the owner's heirs, that we're going to take it down, and they have a short period of time. Now, if it's deemed hazardous, if it's one of those buildings that's about to fall down on its own, there is a process that we can take, the Selectmen can take, to, and I've identified that in those two sheets, that it could be taken down. Right now, I don't think the house itself is in threat of falling down in the near future, but based on that large hole in the roof, and in my experience, anytime a home is exposed to the weather, it doesn't have much, a year or two, and it will reach that point, and it will have to be ordered taken down. So it's kind of a, you know-
Of course, there's a cost associated with it.
What do we do now, more than anything, it's, there is no chance of the house being restored, I don't think it has any value. If an investor wanted to buy that property, they would have to tear it down. I don't think we could even issue them permits to restore it, based on the condition that it's inside, and we haven't been in, we've only looked in, so.
Okay.
To take it down, however-
I hope you didn't climb up on the roof to look in.
The process to take it down, if you decided you wanted to go that route, though, we would have to get onto the property, might have to get into the property to ensure that there's no, the power's been disconnected, we need to ensure that. The oil, the oil is removed, the tank is removed.
It is already?
That we would have to ensure that it were. And somehow, we would have to, we'd want to notify somebody that the property is taken down, and I know the man passed away, but all of his stuff is in there, and it might be of value to somebody who'd hate to just wipe him off the face of the earth and throw it in a dumpster.
I don't think I'd let anyone in the house unless they had a hazmat suit on, from the looks of it on the outside.
Yeah.
And I said, those pictures don't even indicate how bad that property is.
Right.
We don't own it.
Right.
So what are we looking at for insurance and anything else, if we-
Well, my biggest concern, obviously, is not, we're not going to insure the house for its value, we're going to insure the property for injury if we were to take it in tax title. Right now, we have no obligation to property, we don't own it, so-
I imagine that neighbors aren't very happy about this.
Sure, I'm sure. But even if I were to take the property in tax title, I'd have to wait a year before I can execute and go to foreclosure to itself. Right. So it's somewhat, it's disappointing that Land Court is not moving at this time, but it's probably, it's irrelevant, I still get a 12-month waiting period even when I get a ruling. So this is going to be this way for, unfortunately, quite a while. Could we, you know, I mean, I suppose the direct answer is we could board it up, but I'm not fixing the roof, so-
We can fix the roof.
Right now, there doesn't seem to be egress or access to the windows.
You can with a demolition hearing, but you have to notify-
Someone.
Successor entitle, and again-
If we could do that, we wouldn't be in this problem.
That's correct.
Well, I think if you read that carefully, in the event of an emergency, we can take it down. We get, they have 24 hours to respond, if they don't respond, then the house gets taken down.
I don't think it's an emergency, though.
Right, it hasn't gotten to that point.
If he goes in there and gets hurt, it's an emergency, that's for sure. To me, this place is like-
We've marked the building, for no first responders will go in, because the building's marked that way. Nobody else should go in, but they'd be trespassing if they were. The building is marked, so that all first responders are aware not to go in. No one lives there, there's no one to be rescued, there's no need to go in. The other structures on the property really should be removed. The small little sheds.
Those properties are in tax title.
Yeah, and those ones should go.
The building with the flowers, or that part of the house?
There's a, there's a very small garage and two sheds. I think there's two sheds.
I guess what might confuse us, is there's different parcels of land owned by different people on, of this property? What, how do we have some already taken by tax title and some not?
They're all in tax title.
Oh.
But we haven't been able to foreclose on this final parcel.
Right, we can foreclose on the other two, that's no problem. We can foreclose on the house until we identify that there is no successor.
There's a boat down there, though, Peter, in case you want to-
Just throw it on water.
Make a platoon out of it.
I think that my recommendation is to go through the process of tax title when we can. We'll seize the property, you know, if it becomes a nuisance in the meantime, I can board it up, but I don't really want to demolish it, because if I demolish it, and a successor entitle comes forward and says, "Ah, but it was no emergency," then we're on the hook, so-
So what about boarding it up?
I don't think it's a problem at this time, do you? It-
I don't know what it would call.
None of the windows are broken as of right now. We could just continually monitor it, you know.
Right, that's where I'd go.
And when it does get to that...
It's secure in the sense, other than the gaping hole in the roof, it's secure, and I'm not putting anybody on that roof. What about the other structures on there? Did you just say to me a minute ago that you want to take those other structures down?
Those, yes, those should go, for two reasons, the attractive nuisance part of it, and they are starting to fall down.
Right.
But those we can take down.
They're on our property.
Those have reached the...
They're all still in tax title, but we don't actually technically own them until we...
No, but those have reached the point where they have to be down.
I think you could knock them down with a bulldozer quite nicely, and then leave it.
Well, you have to remove, you have to remove everything. Okay.
Say that, I'm sorry, say that again.
So if we do take it down, we have to remove everything.
You can take the outbuildings down.
Right, if you take down the outbuilding, you've got to remove everything and return it to grade.
Let's see if I can identify a source of funds to do this. Do they have foundations, these outbuildings?
If they did, they would just be broken up and filled in. I don't think they do.
Okay.
That's not a big deal. What is the, what would your best guess, I'm gonna hold you to it, cost be to remove the outbuildings and the boat? Is a boat there, David said, or something?
The boat, I have no idea.
Right.
No idea.
Is it seaworthy?
We'll take it up to sea.
I don't know.
Why don't you go down and take a look, Carol, as cheer lady of the group?
We can sell the boat.
Dale can help you.
Yeah, we'll put Dale in the boat.
Honestly, I don't know, but a dumpster for each one would probably be a thousand bucks just for the dumpster.
What usually happens in a process like this? Does it, do you send DPW down there to do that? I mean, do you go out and get a bid on there? How does that work?
Yeah, a lot of times, well, okay, the last time this happened, the building was on town property, and we just had a contractor to come in and take it down. Same type of deal, and then the, the cost, whatever it would, would be assessed to the owner of the property. And basically, if it did get taken in tax title, that's when you would recoup your...
Yeah, that's what he's basically... I mean, I don't know, I just, I feel like you gotta at least eliminate those buildings, in my own personal opinion, you know, if we can monitor the house, so the neighbors will let you know if somebody smashed it.
We pulled out a trailer from a piece of conservation property not long ago, it was forty-seven hundred dollars, and it was a nothing. So let me get a price from, from John about what it would cost to clean up those two outbuildings at least, and then we'll go... Yes, I could put a lien on the property, meaning that when it goes to auction, I can recover that money, but we get the money anyway. I just have to pay for it in the meantime, and I have to identify a source of funds to do that with.
Here's our...
I have every confidence, Steve.
Good for you.
We've stressed a few other things.
Okay, well, thank you.
Thanks, Patrick.
My, my lawyer's here. All right, our last board discussion is in regards to appointed constables. This was something that we had originally put on our town meeting, as you know, and then we passed it over because the state is looking at this, and we have had some people that have been appointed ask about being reappointed. I think that at this time, the recommendation would be that we not do any reappointment of constables until the state comes out with either legislation or recommendation on how this works.
I'd agree.
Brian, do you want to add anything that I...
I think it's important at this point not to be appointing additional constables when, hopefully, come fall, the state will unveil its new law enforcement Comprehensive Act and reform. So right at the moment, I'm suggesting the board postpone any appointments until we have a better feel from the state about where are we going.
Are they elected?
We have some electeds, which I, which you could do nothing about. They are elected.
I have another, I think, year and a half on, on that election.